Alrighty guys, we are heading to the Everts Public Meeting. Afterwards, I'm gonna ask the mayor how the alcohol tax will help benefit the city so you guys understand that more. Excuse me. Nice little truck. Let's go on in and get started.
It's six o'clock, y'all ready to get started? Uh, before we get started in the meeting tonight, Charlie, you should start to speak some work.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful once again for another day of life. We're thankful, dear Lord, that you've allowed us to come out, dear Lord, and to just do the will of you in this city. We ask for just the wisdom to conduct the business in a godly way. Watch over each and everyone who is here. First in Christ Jesus' name we pray.
Again, alright, City of Everts City Council meeting, Tuesday, October twenty first is gonna be called to order. Uh, as usual, first thing we're gonna do is give a financial report.
Uh, on your checking balances, uh, beginning September thirtieth, general fund was in the negative again thirty-nine, twenty-two, seventy-seven. Coal savings was still the same at a negative thirty-four, seventy-eight, ten. Fire had eight thousand, seven hundred, sixty-eight dollars, thirty-five cents. Police drug count had three hundred, eighty-nine dollars, fifty-two cents. Straight fund, seventy-four dollars, fourteen cents. Recreation, one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. County garbage, nineteen thousand, six hundred, ninety-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. House for kids, seven hundred, ninety-two, forty-six. Tourism, fifteen hundred, sixty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Sanitation, twelve hundred, fifty-four dollars, eighty-eight cents. Sewer operations, three thousand, six hundred, twenty-three dollars, thirty-four cents. Sewer depreciation had fifty. Water operations, ninety-three thousand, two hundred, seventy dollars, fifty-seven cents. The American Relief Act had seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars, thirty-one cents. The bond account had five thousand, one hundred, three dollars and thirteen cents. The water deposit fund had a hundred, sixteen thousand, ninety-five dollars, twenty-six cents. KIA had a hundred, and the credit card account had fourteen hundred, eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. For the month of September, uh, the general fund brought in seven thousand, eight hundred, sixty-seven dollars and two cents. Expended seventeen thousand, six hundred, two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Expended nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents more than it brought in. For the year, it has expended twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents more than it brought in. And you can see what all was spent over in the, uh, uh, transactions. The sanitation brought in eight thousand, five hundred, twenty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Expended ten thousand, one hundred, forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Expended sixteen hundred, eighteen dollars and seven cents more than it brought in. For the year, or for the month, for the year, it's a hundred, seventy-five dollars and eighty cents more than it brought in. You can see the expenses. The sewer brought in sixteen thousand, five hundred, twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents for the month. It expended eighteen thousand, twenty-six dollars and thirty-four cents for the month. It expended fifteen hundred, four dollars and sixty-six cents more than it brought in. For the month, for the year, it's expended thirteen hundred, eighty-four dollars and sixty cents more than it brought in. And then the water brought in sixty-four thousand, seven dollars and twenty-three cents for the month. It expended a hundred, twenty thousand, sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. It expended fifty-six thousand, fifty-four dollars and five cents more than it brought in for the month. For the year, it's brought in thirty-nine thousand, one hundred, ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents more than it has expended.
Anybody got any questions about the financials? You start seeing taxes, probably this time next month, maybe. Cause they'll, whatever we get, most of your mortgages paying off, probably collect that, keep that extra bonus, so you start seeing pay tax payments a lot this time. This month, probably next month's back this time. Or maybe earlier. And then on the money that the state owes us, all that back pay for everything. We should, they're telling us they should have our audit ready by November. And once the audit's ready, they'll tell us all that back pay. That's what we're, we're lucky to have a little bit of funds here and there to move around and get through it until that happens. But that should happen sometime in November too. Yeah, so you'll probably start seeing all that money come back in December. Should make us, you know, look a lot better, look a lot better. You got any questions, anybody in the checks or anything?
I'm making more than shit, more kids report.
Larry made the motion to accept a financial report. Charlie, is everybody good with the financial report? Alright, next we're gonna move on to last month's minutes.
City of Everts scheduled meeting for Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty, twenty-five minutes. President, Mayor, and the men, Jake Rembro, Ernie Woodruff, Josh Shackford, and President of the Park. Meeting is kind of ordered, the financial report is re-pressed, the man makes a motion to accept. Ernie seconds and I'll present agree. The minutes from the eight-twenty-six meeting are read. Jackie makes a motion to accept the minutes. Josh seconds and I'll present agree. Minutes from the eight-twenty-eight meeting are read. Josh makes a motion to accept the minutes and Ernie seconds and I'll present agree. Larry is present to give the water reports. He reports that we're currently down to nineteen percent water loss. Preston makes a motion to accept the report or accept the minutes. Uh, Josh seconds and I'll present agree. Mike reports that the water paint site should be ready to be cleared, uh, October. He also discusses with the city council about the possibility of getting road aid grants for Blacktop. Ernie makes a motion for the mayor to be able to sign off on all documents for the road aid grant. Preston seconds and I'll present agree. Police report is tabled, go to the police department, being in football field for a high school game. Uh, the fire report is given. Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Josh seconds and I'll present agree. Larry asks the city council if city workers could have our Veterans Day as one of the holidays that they get off. Ernie makes a motion to allow Veterans Day to be a holiday city workers are now off on. And Josh seconds and I'll present agree. Halloween dates and times are discussed. Ernie makes a motion to keep it as the county air, the same as the county hours. Preston seconds and I'll present agree. Ernie makes a motion to adjourn. Josh seconds, I'll present agree.
Any questions about the minutes from last meeting? If not, can you make a motion to accept the minutes? Jackie made a motion. Ernie said, Jackie bitch too, man. Everybody good with the minutes? Next BJ, the tourism report.
Good evening, everybody. Had a remarkable weekend. Had our fall harvest festival of this park. Had several vendors, uh, much more than we've had in the past. Everybody seemed to do really well. Um, had a boatload of traffic in and out. Overall, it was very successful. That winds up our events this year. Of course, we'll have pre-gliding in December and then the Christmas parade. But, uh, seems like it's been a very good year. We've spent a lot this year trying to, you know, encourage more participation and it seems to have worked. Had a lot of engagement, a lot of people locally that set up as vendors, so. It went, overall, it went really well and they all promised to come back and attend future events, so. We had a really good weekend.
Ernie, anybody got anything for BJ?
BJ.
Sir.
Is that office up there, the entrance office, is it open twenty-four, seven, no, ten minutes?
On event weekends, it's open from usually eight till about ten or late. Um, when it's not an event weekend, they stay there from nine to five typically. Of course, if we have a lot of reservations or something, they'll stay longer.
You care to stick around if you have to? Cause our police department may have some questions about this weekend in the park, so. Be good to have the park board chairman sitting here with us to answer questions too. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the tourism report? Charlie, Larry, is everybody good with that? Appreciate it. I think that would top a little bit of the weekend too, so it'd be good to have you sitting here with us. Alright, next is the water report.
Uh, didn't have a water loss, uh, printed off for you this week. We had some numbers that was a little bit off. Count some meters that was, uh, the numbers were skewed, so we just kinda working through that, but the water loss is still where it was. Uh, not really went up, not really came down any. Uh, we did find a master meter that's reading only about thirty percent of what's going through it. And that's, uh, one of Black Mountain's, uh, sites that we'll be changing out here probably within a week or two. Uh, as soon as the parks come in, and Larry can speak more to that, but, uh, that's something that they found that, uh, really helped revenue wise, uh, especially where it's on the master meter, uh, not reading correctly things, so, um, really been pretty quiet. Uh, still just waiting on, uh, Mike can talk more about when they're gonna break ground up there for the new tank. I don't know if they're gonna do that before, before the end of the year, are you thinking?
They was wanting to go ahead and get the site prepped before the freeze, so they're still trying to schedule that.
Yeah, so it's probably, you know, still looking like after a first year, uh, thing on the build, but but other than that, it's, uh, really been pretty quiet, just kinda like, uh, nothing major going on, so that's why we like it, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Anybody got any questions from Woody? I'll make the motion, but let's let Larry do his, let Larry do his real quick and we'll do it all this time.
After three, our labor report, we ended up, uh, saving a hundred, forty-eight gallons a minute from all the leaks we fixed last month. Uh, the master meter that Woody was talking about, we done changed it out. We changed it out yesterday, so. Everything will be back on for being mud up towards, uh, Black Mountain Way. So, we'll be getting the right reading on the, see if we, it was barely reading, then it just completely went out. Uh, let's see. I'm thinking about changing the meter, master meter going down towards, uh, Aegis Way too. Cause all of them's been in the ground for about twenty years. They never been calibrated since then. Nothing there been done to them, so. I'd say more likely they're going out too. And the one that changed the Llewellyn, that was about two months ago. Changed the Llewellyn, master meter out, will be mud about two months ago, so. Other than that, everything's more good.
It's a lot of leaks, leaks, we'll have to show.
Yeah, uh, we've got, uh, I've got an ARC going out to question a hundred percent grant for a thousand new, uh, water meters. That we need a motion for the mayor to sign any and all documents related to that. The project is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand. With the ARC grant eighty percent and the Cumberland Valley ad is going to apply for a house bill. I think it's seven twenty-three for the twenty percent match. And, uh, they're applying for some more matching funds for house bills, seven twenty-three for the city as well. So, uh, we've got that, the municipal road aid grant went in. I spoke with the department, they was happy with it. Sent somebody from District eleven in to measure all that, make sure that it matched. So, everything looks good on that, moving forward on the municipal road aid. We had an inspection on the Middleton addition. Colbert and FEMA's gonna pay for that, so that's moving forward. Unfortunately, Nolan Street, they denied FEMA due to they found pictures that it was tore up before the flood, so that it was damaged before, and they're questioning the cost estimate. So, uh, I'm, I've got thirty to forty days, I spoke with them today to, uh, correct all those and get it back in. So, I wanna send all that back through and, uh, get that back in order.
Did you, uh, discover that was the project that's got Percy Street, city hall, middle?
Yes, and school street. Yep, it was all, they listed four streets as one project and they denied them all as one project.
Nolan Street, Nolan Street.
Yeah. Which that was a lot more, that, when I went looked at that, there's a sewer line there, there's a water line there that we're having trouble with. There was a lot more work to be done with that than just replacing the core, as well as the driveway and the blacktop and all kinds of stuff. So, I think a more detailed cost estimate and breakdown should go over a lot better than what was sent in before. So, that's what I'm preparing now.
And that was the one that, the other guy, the other FEMA rep was JD, we, I said, well, yeah, that's who put it in, so you're redoing his stuff, I'm sure.
That's right, so yeah, all that was denied and it has to be re, reapplied. So, that's what I'm working on right now.
You got anything else, sir?
That's all for this month.
After we get the motion hit, the water report by the end of the year.
Uh, has anybody got any questions or anything? Ernie, now's your time for the motion for a water report.
I'm making that motion again.
Thank you, sir. Larry seconds, everybody good with the water report? Alright, now we will need a motion to, uh, allow me to do all the signing for that ARC grant?
Yes.
We need somebody to make a motion for that, Charlie made a motion for that, Larry's our up there, so everybody good with that? Okay, I was in there. Alright, good, moving on from water report.
Chief Jones, wage report. Uh, for the month of September, we had a total of seven cases. Of those seven, one drug, one theft, one assault, and four traffic collisions. A total of four motor assist, thirty-one response complaints, one agency assist, seven traffic stops, five arrests, and three hundred and sixty-two and a half man-hours. Also, I wanna give a special thanks to, played on the fire department, Constable Moore for helping us out at the ballgame. They had a really good turnout, it was the first game we'd had there in a long time. A lot of people showed up. They helped the entire time keeping people parked, helping to blow a traffic, everything went real smooth, so. Thank you.
Is anybody got anything to ask Dean or anything? I know there's a lot of questions from this weekend, so if you guys got any questions about this weekend or the events for the fall crawl, and I haven't been time probably to ask them. Well, is it peaceful? Peaceful, pretty much?
No, not really. We, we had a lot of complaints, drunk driving and stuff like that, so.
How hard is it?
Yeah.
At later than a pair of years.
Everybody got nothing else? BJ, you got anything you wanna say or anything?
Uh, Brian was, uh, handling it really well, if you wanna give him a statement?
It's probably one of the busiest weekends we've had in a while. Tons of people here. Tunnel reckless driving, I'll say that, there was a lot of that. There was a lot of people just not really respecting the roads, citizens in the community. I accidentally my sister's wedding early Saturday, cause everybody kept holding my phone up saying that people riding wheelies by Marathon, trying to drag race up Kelly Street. And I know there's a lot of people on Facebook saying we done cord checks, we did not. We wrote two tickets, one for improper passing, the other one's open container. And we had one DUI on the race. People weren't giving field sobriety, if they weren't impaired, they were let go. Drinking and being impaired are two different things.
They gave a lot of breaks too, there's a lot of open containers, a lot of people were just riding around with open containers.
It was nonstop, especially Friday night, there probably wasn't a five-minute gap in between complaints. Lots of sour and anxious.
So, a lot of the things that are being, that I read or being said on social media, a lot of that stuff, if you wanna believe social media, then, you know.
One complaint, it come out of the park, I believe somebody got assaulted up there from what we were told. The driver was drunk, coming out, he was stopped at Merton, sheriff saw him standing DUI and he was arrested.
Well, he had to go up there last year as well, cause of the shoot. It's a guy pulled a gun, pulled a gun, the guy pulled a gun on another person up there. But, yeah, hard, hard to get up there, so we had to wait on ATV, but we was able to make sure everything's okay.
As long as people are driving wheelies through the city, we don't enforce the, uh, the house bill sixty-three law, where you have to have tags, insurance, all that. That makes it hard on a lot of local people, as long as you obey the rules of the road, drive home like everybody does. There's no problem. It's when everybody wants to not obey that, drive crazy and think they can just do whatever. Cause it puts a lot of people in danger, not only themselves, but this time of year, you have a lot of our citizens walking up and down Kelly Street. I think if you're out at night, you'll see a lot of people walking. You've got the, uh, Beryl Fee Memorial Park, where a lot of kids are going now. You've got two parks on that street, a small children's park and the main park. So, it's our job to make sure that's safe, cause anybody that has kids that knows, they get away from it sometimes, they'll run. So, there's no need for people to be speeding down that street while being impaired. Difference between drinking and being impaired. If you're impaired, you will go to jail, but if you drive normal, we have no problem. We enjoy the tourism, we're glad everybody comes here.
It's packed, it was packed in North Everts too, uh.
I think, uh, I think the misconception is you have a few people that act out every year and it takes the whole thing. You have a big group of twenty per year that'll act out and it'll ruin it for everybody. Most people come here, drive normal, respect the road. People that came to our road check, we're like, we're glad you're doing it. We love coming here, but you have a few that, you have a few bad apples and everything, so. There's just a lot of people here, we felt the need to, uh, do a road check, that's what everybody was tore up about. But it kept the peace.
Got complaints on the kids and our community too.
Yeah, there is.
Well, Kelly Street is like, uh, some talent referred to as the main strip, you know, that's.
Oh, they used it as a drag strip basically, so, yeah. We had one individual.
Well, I was thinking, just like, maybe eight o'clock in the evening or whatever, you know, instead of actually setting up and road checking, stopping everybody, maybe just set a car down there with the lights flashing, one up on the other end. And that'll kinda alert them, everybody to be more easier to, without having to actually.
A lot of the things that occur happen right in front of them, it's like they have no respect for the law here or anything. And those are the people we need to, uh, kinda take down. Not ruin their weekend, but like, we need to calm down. Cause there's tons of people here. The city's population multiplies by probably another thousand with all the people coming over from Putney and Everts, cause we have the restaurants, people come over here, they wanna see the city. The ATV park, most of it's on Everts side, so we get all the traffic. And it sometimes becomes a lot for us to handle every complaint, so, but we do our best. But there was no cooler checks, why wouldn't we do a cooler check? Just cause you have beer, have beers on there.
Most of them had the beer already on their.
Most beer was already in between their legs, so they were holding it when they cooled it, so it's common.
I had a little, I had a little campground owner tell me that he got a group in Friday that he said when they pulled in, the first thing they said to them was, we're gonna tear Everts a new A-hole this weekend. And he said, he told them, why would you do that? Because when you do that, it makes it hard on everybody.
Cause there's a lot of good people that come here, and we want those people to come here.
Yeah, you'll get two or three group, two or three people out of a group of, you know, that just group of a thousand that wanna act up and they, they really hurt it for everybody else. So, you know, when people get mad, they need to be mad at the ones acting out and causing it, not mad at the people that's enforcing the job and protecting people's property.
Cause it still remains the same, drive normal on the streets, ain't no problem. Four-wheelers are everywhere around the city.
In most part, most of the people are good, just that two or three.
That's what I'm saying, you have just a isolated group. It causes some chaos for a little bit and we gotta kinda take it down.
Person made that remark should be the person that you really look out for.
Yeah, that guy didn't stay long. Yep, the guy asked the guy what happened to him, the guy over the campground, said, what happened to him? He said, by Saturday morning, their buggy was tore up so bad, they left.
With the amount of people that's in here, you guys have done a splendid job, you're gonna be recognized, good job. This is one council member that gives you the committee.
Appreciate it. BJ, you got anything, sir, as far as the park board standards or what?
Our officers here have always done a tremendous job. I called on Brian especially, how many times this weekend? We had, but it's the nature of the species, you have a lot of people come in, you mix in alcohol, you're gonna have issues. Anything they do on the park is on the park, but when they come into town, they have to be respectful, the laws are going. Here you can't drink and drive. We would never, you know, encourage Brian or anyone else to harass anybody. But I don't think for a second that's their intention. We've always had good cooperation with the state and with the county and with the city. I mean, we've actually retained Brian and this Everts Police Department to come up and provide routine drills. And since then, we've seen a tremendous amount of appreciation for that. That's right, we had that many people in here, the park made a terrific profit this weekend, the county as a whole did. Our little, uh, event that tourism had, everyone made a good profit from it, I'm sure all the businesses did. And no one got vandalized, no one got hurt, we didn't have anyone get blown out. That's a testament to this department and the cooperation we have locally. And, you know, the park always tries to do its best. We have as many as we can present that weekend. I was up there most of the day Friday directing traffic. Thankful for the city for allowing people to park in some of these lots that are vacant. We were able to, I, you know, to actually hold all of the folks that came in. Of course, they were everywhere, but we had a, most of everybody that I talked to had a wonderful time. Um, of course, they're not gonna like a cop being there, but, you know, the city belongs to the residents of the city. And we are to protect that at all costs. And I think they handle that appropriately. Um, the parks absolutely tickle to death with them, I think they do a good job. I hate that some people thought that they were done the wrong way, but, you know, out of a hundred people that are drinking, everybody's gonna say that they're not. So, I have to defend them in the right, but they would have to check folks and, you know, they don't go overboard with it. And I've heard more people commend them. And I've heard more people commend them for making sure they get back safely than I am. Like I said, I hope that folks will still come and be part of it, but the ones that are respectful and that contribute the way they should be. Cause it's a county asset. We don't wanna turn it into, you know, a nightmare. Uh, but we're very thankful for what they've done. Um, also wanted to mention earlier that, uh, we did have, uh, Ignited Coyote YouTube channel. That came up and covered the event. Uh, they came up to the park. And they were just astounded at the amount of people that came here to Deadwood, Kentucky to ride and go wear beautiful windswept. And we're very thankful for that. That, that is a huge boost to our economy and we don't wanna lose it. But at the same time, we wanna make sure that they stay respectful of the community and the people that live here, pay taxes here and raise their children here, so.
I mean, I know, I know when they roadblock, they got a lot of people that came through that thanked them for it. So, and I've got a lot of messages for people thanking us for, you know, getting it kinda tamed down a bit, so.
As a citizen of North Edwards, I appreciate them stopping their little kids on their dirt bikes before they get killed, honest to God. That, that was neat.
A lot of it during the week was just telling some of these kids, it's like, look, these roads are looking easy.
That traffic that we would've had this week, we would've had one of them here. We would've.
What kind of bicycle? Was it a bicycle?
Little dirt bikes, little dirt bikes, yeah.
A lot of them just ride North Edwards cause it's residential, it's safe. You have the school park and all that stuff over there, so.
I think a lot of it got started, one or two posts gets a lot of it started and, and I don't. You know, I don't know that, you don't ever know what really happened. You've got their word and, but I believe the officers. And then you gotta look how bad it got. It got so bad this weekend that the county had to send a bunch of cops up here to help us. So, you know, and it got pretty rowdy, so.
The sheriff was also out this Saturday, I think too.
And like they said, it's not to be a hindrance to anyone's fun, but it's to keep everybody safe.
And to protect the property of our citizens. I mean, that's what we're here for. So, you know, we hope there's a. And if you get two out of line, the parks that shut down over the years because they let them get two out of line. And when it starts to get two out of line, then your parks are gonna get shut down. So you gotta have some, you gotta have, uh. Some resemblance of law enforcement to, to protect. And like I said, you'll get a hundred people to come in and ride and ninety-nine will be great. And you'll get that one person that wants to tear Everton's new a-hole.
Well, and we've always had, and Brian and Andy confessed that, we have conversations continuing. About things that we can do to improve, to make it safer, to keep people from feeling like they're being harassed or, you know, jumping down. That's never our intention. We want them to come and have a good time, but, you know, that, you have to behave and act like.
It's why we're leaning on the, uh.
Unfortunately, we might get the bad end of it.
We're pretty leaning on the law that just came out. That would pay for a lot of people. And we have a senior that's allowed it to ride all the streets.
And that's what we talked about before. Fortunately for us, most of the streets that they travel on. In this area, our county roads are city roads. And we don't have to enforce a lot of that stuff that the House Bill would've forced us to do. And, you know, Brian is very respectful of them. He, you know, he appreciates it as well. You know, there is a few that, and I don't know who they are, but, you know, I'm sorry that they felt that way. It's just. We're going to maintain law and order, always.
That's what you gotta do, you know, that's for sure.
We want to be family oriented. We want people to bring their kids here. We want them to enjoy the city. We're getting more things in the city. We want people to bring their kids here. Have a good time, ride the mountain, enjoy it. They shouldn't have to worry about coming out on the road. And somebody driving crazy in a razor trying to sling it sideways and it break loose and hit them. Cause most people aren't wearing their seatbelts and these razors don't get ejected and so. So there's a lot of safety issues that go along with that. If we keep everybody safe, that's what we want.
I'd say most of the guys that you talk to or stop, you know, or checkpoints, you know, they probably. In most part, probably enjoy conversation back and forth.
I'll just be sitting there for a couple minutes to stop.
Be careful, have a good time and be respectful.
They showing us their rides and we talk and. Most of them are just. Fine, happy. Most of them really enjoy the day, you know, that's what we want.
Yeah, I always look at situations like, if you're, if I go out of town somewhere into a strange place like that, you, you wanna try to be. Respectful, not go over the limit. And that's just having a good talk with them like that and being sociable, but, yeah, you gotta do your job and. And, and let them know and understand that.
No, some of the people that's really overlooked in this whole situation is the good folks that live on them. They discuss.
They, uh, they make it.
They put up with this, they say nothing and it goes right off.
They say a lot.
And I, and I would love, it's my problem, you don't know that that much. But, uh, I would love to see the county or somebody clean the garbage up on the side of the roads. Uh, it's, it's, it's pitiful. But you know more about what's going on, going on when you're hurting anybody, Kristy. You should do.
But they need to get the prisoners up there. You're riding up there and get bad, get bad.
They never send the prisoners up there?
I've never seen them up there.
I've never seen them once, I agree. My friend though, the Kelly Street.
I know that in Kelly Street, but you're right, but basically. Even the trees.
I see it. I'm riding my little. Bullsheen up there, got some grass. I can see all this beautiful garbage. I said, my God, somebody had to keep this clean.
Yeah, I, I think that. We need, we need to talk about things, cause like I said, we just come into a meeting and we don't talk about this weekend, nothing, whatever. Then all the rumors of how bad it was, uh, become reality on Facebook. And, I, you know, of course, I live on Kelly Street, so, I mean, it was pretty rough this weekend compared to the last three, four years, but. Uh, I was right there and heard a lot and seen a lot. And what I seen, at least with no respect for. Yeah, there might've been one or two that had to get, had to get ordered with. I can't attest to what the county did. But I'm sure there was people out there that they had to get tested with. But, uh, at the end of the day. You know, we want people to come in here and ride. We want them to love Edwards. We want them to come in and, uh, you know. Check their businesses out and, uh, have a good time and I want, we want them to make memories here. But we've also got an obligation to our people to protect their property and we just have to do that, so. And when you're, the more complaints you get, you know, these officers have to answer complaints. So a busy weekend like this, you're gonna get hundreds of complaints. But I'd say when they had the roadblock and I, Brian, Brian standing behind me, he probably said the same thing. I'm sure they got a whole lot more people that told them thank you than they got that complained. Am I right about that? People, even the people come here to ride told them thank you, cause they don't wanna, you know. Leave them go up on the trail and somebody come around and hit them and take them out. So at the end of the day, you know, you'll get one or two. That'll act up and then they play the victim card, uh, and then they tell other people, well, guess what they were doing down there? Well, these people say, guess what they're doing down there? They're checking coolers. They didn't see nobody checking coolers. They just going off some belts or something. But at the end of the day, you know, we're through another weekend, fall crawl and hopefully, uh. Hopefully people come back and visit and the ones that felt like they was done wrong by the police department, you know. If they don't come back, I, I understand. We'd like them to come back, but if they don't, we understand. That's pretty much it. But if we don't talk about it in a meeting, if we don't talk about it amongst ourselves, we get nowhere with it. So I'm, I, I think this is something we need to talk about tonight.
I just, we were just talking, I just have, have to think. BJ might wanna check into this, you know, like a little two-wheel, uh, roadside. Sign, you know, it's like the State Department has, you know, and you could park over there somewhere on Kelly Street. And put something in the sign, light it up at night. Something to get their attention, to ride slow to be careful, not to miss that or whatever, you know. Something like that might. I don't know, special event.
Yeah, the county's actually brought theirs up a couple times. I've been using my electricity. And I know like at the Pokes Sound Festival, you'll see it to where, you know, maybe for these big weekends, maybe the city ought to look at. Uh, you know, no matter what everybody thinks, we don't make any money off the park, guys. Uh, you know, we use a lot of resources to, to help the park. But at the end of the day, the city don't really garnish itself off the park. Our businesses do good and that's what we wanna do. But maybe we ought to look at, uh, renting a billboard during fall, fall crawl's the biggest weekend. Maybe rent a billboard during that, to slow down.
That's the, uh, the biggest weekend we had.
Like what the county does for the park sound festival.
And I know that they have spoken before with the state to get those, uh, they provided them on the footnecks. I had a lot. Yes, traffic on one, I've seen there at the campground as well. And that is something that I think they'd be very receptive to doing here, uh. I don't know why it's never been done in the past, but I would care a bit to reach out to them and see if that's possible.
And the county has brought their, uh, radar up for us to park, because like I said, I, I was using my electricity to do it. It does give them a little bit of, uh, you know, speed check of what they're doing, uh, coming down Kelly Street.
We actually had that last year. That's when, uh, I thought the kids were doing a wheelie in front of. There he had it. He comes by our festival, does a wheelie and wrecks and knocks himself out cold on the runway.
Right in front of the.
That's just how people drive. You're going by them, it were small kids on and driving like that, so they have no respect for us. Cause I'd already stopped him before and he's still doing that anyway. So they give you that mentality that they have, that they don't care.
I think this has been a good little report and we grow and learn from it. I feel like you guys learn every day and every year. And maybe just what we discussed here today will help save somebody's life or make everything more peaceful when we do have a crowd in like that, so.
Input's good. Possibly could we get somebody notified about the garbage?
Yeah, you know, of course, that's not, that's way out of city limits, but we still, but that's okay. What we can do is Cleto, Cleto can call down to jailers and ask them to put them on the list to clean Baines Corp. and get the creek. Uh, we can, we can call there and ask them to put them on the list before we can Cleto.
We on the list down there already right now.
So Cleto called her and asked them to move that list and see if they can include Baines Creek for us. I'm sure that's something that jailer wouldn't mind doing. Even though that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Dan Mowgli might have a little, uh, input to that.
We can all get over to Dan and ask Dan for the same thing. And then, and we can, we can ask the jailer also.
I'm sure the people would appreciate that.
Yeah, well, I would appreciate it.
Well, anywhere you go across the United States, you always wanna find a few places similar to that. But thing about it is, you got a lot of out of town people come in here and a little bit of cleanup is, Ernie's talking about there. It gives a little more respect when they see it cleaned up, yeah.
I agree. Anybody got anything else for the police department? Nope. Can I get a motion to accept a police report? I already got the motion. Ernie, say, can somebody get the police report? Alright, thank you. Get that out. Like I said, we think some things we need to talk about. Alright, Cleto, fire report.
Fire report. I had, uh, two medical calls and one LZ. And this week we had our, uh, state ordered, ordered, uh, it went, it went good. We passed all that on our trainings and all that. And, uh, around about here, so now it's Friday coming, not this Friday, next Friday, we'll be doing our, uh. Candy giveaway over here at the firehouse.
Y'all gonna, you say North Edwards gonna be blocked off this year also? Same way?
Same way.
Yeah, and I'm sure the weather will play a part. Weather being of course. Alright, can I get the motion accepted, fire report? And then Jackie, you got the motion in a second?
It's just five o'clock in the evening, one to five.
Alright. Uh, have y'all got anything on old business that needs to be done? I'm moving on to new business. I think that Ronnie and Christie's got something new business for us to look at.
We just, we got a letter from a lawyer named Lauren Wolf from DBL Law. And this is about Windstream Kinetic is apparently sold out to Unity Group Incorporated. And this is all they're doing, all, all this really is, they want us to pass a resolution that they sent to us. That essentially says that we're gonna allow this new group to do the same stuff that Windstream committed for Everton here, pretty much. Uh, it's just recognizing that they're gonna transfer all their ownership interest and company assets to, to this Unity Group. And, uh, and that we're gonna continue to allow them to use, to do their franchise and the railways through the city.
And then there's a map on the last, everybody's gotta copy what they send us and then you got a map. On the last part that it shows where the lines are.
They're, they're gonna put five, they're planning on putting five of them through here, which is, which is why they're gonna, why they're sold out.
Yeah, that's all it is, but it is a formality basically for the sellout. And, uh, they've hounded us to death about it and we need to get them.
Yeah, if they're gonna do five around here, it'll be in the law. A lot of people will be happy to hear Windstream's property settled, to be honest. So you said to read that resolution?
We just gotta read the resolution and hang it, guys. That's all we gotta do. Uh, resolution number ten twenty-five, a resolution acknowledging the presence of telecommunications facilities in the city railways. Whereas telephone service has been provided to residents of the city of Edwards by Windstream Kinetic for its subsidiaries for many years. Whereas Unity Group Inc. acquired Windstream Kinetic on August first, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Unity Group Inc. has continued to pay the telecommunications tax to the Kentucky Department of Revenue. As required by KRS one thirty-six point six zero zero. And whereas Unity Group plans to transfer the telecommunications asset. It is assets that have been acquired from the Windstream Kinetic into a company called Kinetic ABS Kentucky LLC. And whereas the city of Edwards has been assured that this transfer of assets will not have any impact. On the quality of services, access or customer support provided to customers in the city of Edwards. And whereas Windstream has placed its facilities in the city's railways had, having been authorized to do so. And whereas Kinetic ABS KY LLC wishes to continue to locate its facilities in the city's railways. And continue to pay untold communication tax required by KRS one thirty-six point six zero zero. Now therefore, it been resolved by the city of Edwards Council of the city of Edwards Harley, Kentucky. Section one, that the city council of the city of Edwards, Kentucky acknowledges that. Kinetic ABS Kentucky LLC will continue to locate its facilities within the city's railways. And that it may continue to do so unless Kinetic ABS Kentucky LLC continues to pay any and all taxes. Required by KRS one thirty-six point six zero zero. Section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force when passed. And recorded according to law that privileges of Kinetic ABS Kentucky LLC to remain in the city's railways. Is not exclusive. It may be revoked by superseding resolutions or orders duly passed by the city council of the city of Edwards. Need a motion to pass that resolution, please.
Make a motion. Is everybody good with this? Has anybody got anything else to do business?
Yeah, oh, they're gonna put that street right there up on the hill. It's pitch dark. Up on, uh, Hawthorne Street between that, Woody up there. It's pitch dark.
Cleto, is it marked?
Yeah, it's marked.
Well, I haven't had a column again, cause I guess, cause I had a bunch on my list that, uh, they don't work and I send it and they just not done. So I'll figure out, find that for you.
Yeah, it's, it's real pitch.
And it's between you and Woody?
Yeah, that's right.
Is it in that alley?
That light is out and it's pitch dark. Oh God, it's so dark. They can break in anything.
And there's, there's a lot of, a lot of foot traffic coming.
Oh, oh, it's.
On the main road.
Main road. It's, it's.
Uh, beside Joyce's house.
It's right beside Joyce and Mary Jo's house. And, and I mean, it's pitch dark.
It is.
We got too many folks walking and driving. Bullwellers too.
We'll reach back at the KU for you again. KU's kinda. They kinda just do things to their own pace.
They really do, I seen them a whole yesterday, I wonder if they get to one of those.
All that, and I know it's already. Christie, I thought you said a couple years ago, they were supposed to start changing all the flight systems out.
He uh, we've got it all sent in, but he, I've not heard anything back on it yet, Larry. Uh, I think that's just gonna be a long process. But as they put them in, they do change them out to the LED, as I said.
That's how they did down on Nolan Street, they changed it, it's so bright.
Yeah, as they change them out, they do, and I don't know if that's their plan or what their plan is.
Eventually their plans will do everything, but like I said, they work at their own pace. It ain't like we, you know, can't college up on, we can't ask them to do it like D J.
Not like Callum asked.
Well, just like she mentioned there, if they come and fix six, eight, ten of them, then they'll change.
Yeah, they, when they couldn't, when they couldn't do any, anything, they couldn't blow them right there, we've got to tag anything they couldn't, they replaced them everywhere. It's a lot now.
Well, that may be the secret way they.
Anybody got anything else in new business? Everybody got anything in the crowd, Mark? BJ, thank you for stating. You guys alright back there?
Yep.
Alright? We're alright. We make some motion to adjourn.
Alrighty guys, that's it, we'll hang around and see what BJ wants. Y'all make sure you like, comment, subscribe, share, I'll see you guys on the next video.